Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Stanislaus County on Wednesday, September 16th, our Candidates Forum for the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we are welcoming the candidates for District 1, Matthew Buck Condit and Bill Zasloki, and for District 5, Chance Condit and Tom Helenan. Volunteering tonight from the League of Women Voters of Stanislaus County, serving as moderator, is Marie Berry. Serving as our timekeepers are Karen and Ed Tobacco. I'm Amy Wolf, serving as technical support, and offline supporting us is Judy Crop. Tonight's forum is being recorded, and we will make the recording available in just a couple of days. You can access it on the League of Women Voters website at www.lwstanislaus.org, or on our Facebook page at L W Stanislaus County. As Marie will go to in greater detail our guidelines for tonight, each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. After that, we will ask a series of questions that have been submitted to us by the voters, and each candidate will have one minute to respond, at which time each candidate will have two minutes to provide a closing statement. As our moderator, Marie has randomly selected the order in which the candidates will participate this evening, ensuring everyone has an opportunity at the first, second, third, and fourth opportunity to speak. We thank all of you for joining us, and in particular, for our candidates for their participation tonight, and please don't forget voting on November 3rd. With that, Marie, it's my pleasure to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Forum for the Stanislaus County Supervisors race for Districts 1 and 5 on the November ballot. I am Marie Berry from the League of Women Voters, and I'm going to be the moderator this evening. As Amy indicated, it's being recorded for later viewing so that everybody has an opportunity to hear what our candidates have to say. The League of Women Voters, of course, is a nonpartisan political organization, which means that we do not support or oppose candidates or parties. We do, however, take positions on issues that our league members have studies. So the purpose of our meeting this evening is to provide that nonpartisan objective setting where voters can hear from each of the candidates. The questions have been submitted by league members, as well as receive questions from the public. All candidates will be responding to the same question, so we'll hear each person's view on that particular issue. The views will be expressed are the views of the candidates themselves. I'd like to just for a second reintroduce the candidates. From District 1, we have Buck Condit and Bill Zasloki. From District 5, we have Chance Condit and Tom Helenan. As Amy indicated, this evening, the format will be to have introductory statements, two minutes per candidate, a series of questions where they will have one minute to respond, and again, the closing statements. Our timekeepers are going to keep them to the task. They will be getting a warning sign at 15 seconds before their question of responses. In our home, we sort of did a virtual drawing to determine who would be starting at which sections and who would be ending, and as Amy indicated, everybody has a chance to be first or last, depending on how you want to look back. So, without further ado, we will begin our candidate statements, and the winner of the first drawing will be, from District 1, Bill Zasloki. Would you like to start with your introductory comments, sir?
Thank you. My name is Bill Zasloki, and as you know, I am running for Stanislaus Board of Supervisor, District 1, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us a chance to share who we are and sort of give you an idea of what we are about and what we believe in. We are in trying times right now, though, and what separates me from my opponent is experience. Experience that's broad-reaching and multifaceted. We're in trying times with COVID-19 unlike anything in the past. At this time, we are not only struggling with health and our well-being, but we're being strained. Our economics, our economy is being strained to the extreme. People are rightfully worried, all for people need experienced leadership that they can count on, experience that has been tried and tested. I have over 46 years in business. I've built 500 homes, nearly 330 apartment buildings for people with low, very low income. I've employed hundreds of employees and subcontractors. My partners brought jobs to our community, and in doing so, we have enriched many families. I have served on over 15 local, state, and national committees. My top five issues are COVID-19, dealing with that, and the aspects of what it's done to us, water, protecting to assure the capacity and efficiency of our water system, diversity in our economy while supporting our historical jobs, also bringing new jobs to our community. Not only do we need to assist in the ever-changing economy, but we need also to assist in the transition for existing industries to remain effective in the future, and also supporting public safety and keeping our society safe and orderly. I serve on four water boards, or have served, Stanislaus County Water Advisory Committee that has worked diligently to preserve groundwater and work towards what we're going to do in the future, North Valley Regional Water Recycle, JPA, and City of Modesto, MID Domestic Water Policy Board, and I also served on the Stanislaus National Water Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your introductory comments, Bill Zasloki from District 1, and now we will hear the other candidate from District 1, Buck Condit, for his introductory statement.
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for giving us the opportunity to come before and put our message to the voters. Appreciate that very much. My name is Buck Condit, and I'm a candidate for Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, District 1. I've lived in Stanislaus County for more than 50 years and resided in Riverbank, where my wife, Kim, and I are raising our two sons, Ethan and Eric. I will bring the same dedication to the Board of Supervisors that I've brought to my 33-year career as a firefighter, 20 of those years as a captain for Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District. We must meet our challenges with the goal of improving quality of life for our residents in Stanislaus County, and I'm running for supervisor to bring fresh ideas and a common-sense approach to local government. If I'm so honored and elected, I will work to protect prime agricultural land, ensure that our public safety officers have the training and staffing and finances needed to protect our community, stand up to state bureaucrats for our water rights, work to combat homelessness, support term limits for Stanislaus County. Remember, I work for you, the people. There may be no better time to have a first responder on the Board of Supervisors than right now. And if you have any further questions, please give me a call at 209-402-4238, or email at buckcondit@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you for the introductory comments, and now we'll hear from the candidates from District 5, and we will start with Chance Condit.
I want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight, asking the tough questions. You know, the league is the gold standard for political forums, and you guys do a great job in getting our message out to the public, so I really appreciate it. I'm Chance Condit. I currently serve on the Siri City Council. I work as an economic development specialist for Opportunity Stanislaus, and I'm running to be the next supervisor of District 5 for the same reasons I ran for the Siri City Council, and that is to improve the quality of life for our residents, to make sure that government is accountable and responsive to the public, and to make sure that we are looking out for the needs of our residents here. You know, I want to make a difference. I want to put the needs of the community first, and I will always make the decisions wholeheartedly for the best needs of the public. I will be an independent voice. I will be proactive, and I hope to have your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your introductory comments, and now we'll hear from the other candidate for District 5, Tom Helenan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to welcome you into my home via my iPhone tonight, and like everybody else, thank you for this opportunity. In this unprecedented time that we're in, this is one of the few forums we'll have to communicate to the vote. Appreciate that very much. Again, my name's Tom Helenan. I'm running for District 5, and you know, District 5, it's not only the largest district, but it's really almost two worlds within the one district. You have a series in South Modesto, and then you have the West Side. I have a unique experience representing both of those areas previously. For 20 years, I represented South Modesto and Series on the Yosemite Community College Board, and for the last 24 years, I've worked as a legal counsel on the West Side, representing the communities of Patterson, Newman, Grayson, Crowes Landing, and Wesley. So because of that, people know me, and I'm proud to be endorsed by the leaders of all those communities. I'm endorsed by the mayors of Newman, Patterson, and the presidents of the Grayson, excuse me, Crowes Landing, and Wesley Community Services District. I'm also proud to be endorsed by Siri's Mayor Chris Viera, and Mike Klein, who was the third candidate previously in this race, as well as a former supervisor in this district, Sal Canella. So I have the knowledge, the experience working with these issues. I've made it my life's work, and I think that's especially important as we are in these trying, unprecedented difficult times. I helped get us out of the I helped guide us out of the last Great Recession. I think that experience will be helpful to get us out of this pandemic, and I'm sure will address the issues of importance to me as we continue debate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard the introductory statements from the candidates for District 1 and from District 5. We'll start the questioning period by hearing from the candidates from District 1, and well, the first one to respond will be Buck Condit, and here's the first question that all the candidates will respond to. "In your view, what went wrong with the county's management of the coronavirus, as it seems we continue to struggle to gain control?"
I think the first problem right out of the gate was a lack of planning. There seemed to be, Stanislaus County was slow out of the gate, not due to heart. I know there's a lot of employees that care about the job they do, and they want to do a good job, but it seemed like there was not a plan being followed. Slow on testing. Once the information started coming out, the numbers started showing. It seemed like we were heading in the right direction, then we find out the numbers are wrong, and we lost a lot of trust with the public. I think we're back on the right track now. There still needs to be more testing, and I think that, you know, we're heading in the right direction now.
Okay, thank you. And we'll hear from Bill Zasloki, also a candidate for District 1.
Thank you. I think first of all, we have to recognize that we had something that's never happened before to this extent in our county, ever in the past. We've had pandemics, but it wasn't in an area of communication where you could react. And so, our county was not prepared, because I don't think they anticipated fully what could happen. Now we know. Now we've seen it. The single biggest issue was the Hispanic group that was underestimated and obviously not completely considered in the process of how there are particularly so many that work in our fields and are new immigrants here comprehending what was going on. Getting that communication was not effective, and getting the information to be able to separate and be safe in their, how they operate in society was obviously deficient. They've worked on that, and that's having a success, and we're seeing it by our numbers going down.
Thank you. That was, we've heard from the candidates for District 1, and now we'll hear from the candidates from District 5, starting off with Chance Condit, please.
Thank you. I think we could have done better with our testing and outreach to the public, especially to our most vulnerable populations and the underserved. You know, another thing I believe we could have done better is with the CARES Act funding. You know, the county received $96 million through the CARES Act. Of that $96 million, only 15 million went to the cities, you know, and our cities are fully reliant on sales tax revenue, and we have been struggling since the pandemic started. I definitely would have advocated for more equity of that sharing. I do think the cities would have benefited individually, and if our cities are stronger individually, our county will be stronger as a whole. So those are some of the things I would have done different, and I appreciate the question.
Thank you. And from Tom Helenan? You're mute.
You guys are muting me. I said, I agree with most of what everybody said. I think the minority outreach is especially important since such a large portion of that population lives in District 5, so that's something we definitely needed to improve on, and I know we started to do that, and that needs to continue. You know, I agree with one of the other candidates who said, you know, it's easy to criticize. I mean, this is a thing of first impression for the entire world, so I think we just need to do a top-to-bottom review of what happened, and then let's just improve going forward. So again, I agree with most other things that were said on this.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, there'll be a couple of COVID-related questions, but we'll kind of take different aspects of that, take different point of view. So we'll start with the second question, going to the candidates for District 5, and we'll start with Chance Condit. Here's the question. "Assuming COVID will be with us for a while, what will you do to balance the continuing threat of the virus and the need to reboot our economy, opening the schools, churches, and other kinds of activities in our community?"
Well, we definitely need to practice what we preach. I believe that we need to use common sense and logic and social distance, wear a mask, and I would encourage those out in the public to do the same. I know I've been doing that when I go to the grocery store, to the gas station. I'm out walking door-to-door currently. I wear a mask, and I make sure to step back six feet. But in regards to the economy, you know, I work as an economic development specialist. We need to help our businesses now more than ever. We need to have a good public and private sector partnership, and we need to help them in times of need, and that's how we prioritize our money. We need to make sure that we are providing relief, relief funding for our businesses right now who are hurting more than ever, and I believe I can do that. But that all comes down to outreach and participation, and making sure that our business partners have a seat at the table, and I will do that as next county supervisor.
Thank you. That was Chance Condit, and then we'll hear from Tom Helenan. He's mute.
I just wanted, let me try again. Our numbers are coming down, and that's a good thing. I think that's because we're now doing what we're supposed to do. I didn't see a lot of people doing that previously, so we have to use our bully pulpit on the Board of Supervisors to encourage people to do these things and to take it seriously, and I've taken it very seriously. I've got two older parents, one's on chemo right now, so I take this very seriously. I've stayed at home a lot more than I'd like to, but that's just what we need to do. Regarding businesses, I think it's important to do things like we've done in some of the cities I represent. First of all, we go ahead and ask them what they need, and then, secondly, we've pivoted. So now that the outdoor dining, for example, is allowed, we ask people what we can do to help them make that work. So, you know, I've written on the, you know, the bottom of the check as well, so listening to business people is important in addressing any issue.
Thank you. We've heard from the candidates from District 5, and now we'll hear from those from District 1, and we will start with Bill Zasloki.
Thank you. Would you read the question again, please?
Certainly. "Assuming that COVID will be with us for a while, what will you do to balance the continuing threat of the virus with the need to reboot our economy, opening activities that most people are looking forward to?"
That is a very good question, because I'm hearing it often with those that I talk in our community when I'm out and talking with them. There's a lot of concern about that. The numbers are going in the right direction. I think it's, as these numbers improve, we certainly have an opportunity to start opening more areas of our economy and do something about the high unemployment. I mean, if you look at businesses, some have been significantly impacted. Some of them have already gone out of business, and many more may, just because of the draconian answers to what we have done in this new venture that we've never had before. So that'll all be measured later on. First of all, we continue with those that are, the governor has set the priorities. We have to follow those laws. We can't violate them. The Supreme Court has weighed in, and the governor has that authority, though I don't agree with some of his requirements. I think that we can move forward within the age groups that are safe and haven't had issues, and perhaps open some areas that can employ people, even if it's a slower process than a full recovery and just, or ignoring everything, just because there are those that are in the demographics that need to stay in an area of protection, remaining their homes and such.
Thank you. Okay. Question number three is an area that you have already referenced, and we'll just go in through it.
Marie?
Yes.
We need to give Buck Condit the opportunity.
I did. I crossed him out without listening to him. I apologize. I'm so sorry.
You got super, super cross-happy.
Do you want me to restate the question? I'm sorry.
Yes, if you would, please.
"Assuming that COVID will be with us for a while, what will you do to balance the continuing threat of the virus with the need to reboot our economy and open the community to public activities?" Again, I apologize.
No worries. We need to listen to our health and safety professionals with the facts of how to protect ourselves, and we need to follow those. We also need to let the American ingenuity with engineer designs to protect ourselves so that we can get our economic viability back open and running. We need to take care of our underserved communities, and we need to get our businesses back up and running. I have a personal, my wife tested positive for COVID. It was in our house, and we were able to keep it from spreading. I didn't get it. My boys didn't get it. That's because we had a plan, and we followed it, and we listened to the healthcare professionals on how to protect ourselves. And so, yeah, that's, we need to listen and practice.
Okay. Now, this is an area that we've made reference to, but we'll kind of build it on the COVID situation. COVID has made us even more aware of the underlying racial, ethnic, and economic inequities in our county, that is, access to housing, education. What will you do to address these inequities for the long term? And we'll start with Bill Zasloki.
Well, certainly, look at the demographics and where the difficulties are in establishing and being able to handle a diverse community. I mean, it's not a one shoe, it's not one thing, one size that fits everything. This is, as I said, a difficult venture of what we're in right now. We don't even know when it's going to end at this point, but in any case, I would agree that we can take care of this, involving our healthcare agencies as well as business, bringing them into the group a little more fully than we have in the past, and recognizing what's happening. And the same thing can happen with this pandemic that we've done in the past, where we overcome it. Thank you.
And from Buck Condit, the same question?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah. "The COVID has made us even more aware of the underlying racial, ethnic, and economic inequities in our county. What will you do to address those inequities for the long term?"
It comes down to accessibility and being able to build those relationships in those communities, and being able to provide those services, being approachable and responsive, building those programs so they're not afraid to come out and get those services. I think that's where it all begins, is trust and relationship building.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from the candidates from District 5, and we will start with Tom Helenan. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, specifically, I think we need to expand things like first-time homebuyer programs, but then generally, it's all about economic development and jobs. And what I like to do is, I've been city attorney in Patterson. We've made a lot of things happen out there, because we've made it easy business to get going. We've got shovel-ready projects. We've got streamlined permitting. We're ready to go, so I'd like to take that to the board.
Okay, thank you. And Chance Condit?
You know, District 5 is probably the most diverse district in the county. It's probably also on the lower socioeconomic status in the county as well. And there are some folks who feel they have been left behind or forgotten or get overlooked, and we need someone who's going to make sure they go out and make contact with those communities and make sure that they have a seat at the table, and I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to be proactive in that capacity. And what we need now more than ever is less talking at one another and more talking to one another. So that comes down to communication and outreach, and making sure that everyone is represented, and that's what I'm going to do as supervisor.
Thank you. We've heard from the candidates from District 1 and District 5. Here's question number four, and we will be starting off with Tom Helenan on this one, from District 5. "California has an on-growing cycle of drought. Our aquifers are endangered with more drilling. What actions will you take to support agriculture and protect the aquifers for the future?"
You know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of programs, but also a lot of regulations in place. We've got a lot of groundwater requirements, but what we need is more water storage. We gotta have it. I know it scares people. They don't like it. For example, there's a proposed dam out in Patterson, and people have some concerns about it. I've looked at the EIR. I think that when you weigh that, our need for water is paramount, and I'm supporting that, that dam. I think we have to make those decisions. If we want, if we want more water, we've got to support more water projects. Thank you.
Okay. And Chance Condit from District 5 also?
Well, water is our most precious resource here, and we need someone who's going to fight for our water rights, make sure that the bureaucrats in the state keep their hands off our water rights, and it's protected for our agriculture community. But we also need to support surface water treatment projects, and that's, Siri's and Turlock currently has a project in place, and it's ongoing, and that will be, provide cleaner and more accessible drinking water for our public residents, and it will get us off of groundwater, which, as we know, has high contaminants, and leave that for agricultural usage. And I would agree that the Del Porto Dam project is great. We need to be proactive as a community on water storage, since the state has lagged so far behind on that. So it's a great project, and it will benefit our agriculture community, and our surface water project will benefit our residents.
Thank you. And the candidates for District 1, we will hear from Buck Condit.
Storage is the key. We live in California. We have wet years, and we have dry years, and we need to take advantage of every opportunity when we have those wet years to store water. We also need to listen to our Sustainable Groundwater Management Act committees that are out there drawing up plans that are going to protect our aquifers, and we need to do everything we can to protect Ag, which is our number-one economic engine driver here in Stanislaus County, and that in turn is going to help our communities keep those waters sustained so that we can continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is a different topic. Okay. It's a question of homelessness.
Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss something again?
Forgot, Bill. They're just quiet when we leave them muted.
They, I'm sorry. I'm not counting well at all. They're going to fire me. Go ahead, Bill.
So one of the things to consider is, this county's already been involved in refreshing and creating environment where we're less reliant as we can be, considering that we need every drop around here, and the state demanded a sigma plan for each and every county across California. And I was on that board that helped write that, that act and adopted. It's now adopted in Stanislaus County. So including in that is what we are going to do to try to preserve the water, the existing water that we have. It's still going to be a challenge in drought years. We'll be trading water with different areas in order to maintain what we can. Water is the most precious commodity that we have in our community, and everything we can do to preserve what we have in access is going to have to be done. We can't let our water rights be taken away from us and be shipped down to a different area in California. It's here first. We should keep it first, and that's my philosophy on it. And I plan on fighting the whole way to make sure we keep our water rights in our keep our water rights in our county.
Okay. Everybody's done the water one. Okay. The next question, and again, we will be starting with Buck Condit on this one. Homelessness continues to be a major issue throughout the county. Several approaches have been taken by various entities, public, private, nonprofit. What will, if you were elected, what will you do to get people off the street and into a new life?
Yeah, the services that are being provided by Stanislaus County right now are some of the best around, and we need to keep going down that road. But we also need to come to the realization that the biggest problem is drugs and mental health. So we need to double our efforts on trying to get people out of that environment if they want the help. I don't, I'm sure every family has been touched by drug abuse or a mental health crisis in some form. And you know how difficult those situations may be. We can't give up. The cost is too high not to do anything. But we have to continue the fight of helping the people that want the help and hold people accountable that don't, but continue to abuse the system. So I think we're heading down the right direction. We just need to double our help on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill Zasloki?
You know, it's multifaceted. I served about nine years on a homeless organization and actually served and touched many people that are, were then homeless. And I understand what takes them there and what it takes to get out. It takes a life change in many cases. In my case, it was a religious organization, and, and we offered hope and changed lives. So part of what government is trying to do, Stanislaus County is in the lead, probably more so than any other county in Stanislaus County, or excuse me, California. And as, as we work towards, as this county has worked towards it, we've had some effectiveness. But we're still, the cycle of turnover is still significant. We still have more and more people that have come here that are new, and, and those that have cycled and gone to other counties. It's a revolving door almost. What didn't help is when the state of California passed about forty-seven, fifty-seven, and we also had AB 109 where we had so many that were serving in jail in the state system, being cycled into, into Stanislaus County and our jail system. And we weren't prepared for that time, and we've done, but it's a difficult process when you have such a large turnover. Pull back the laws.
Thank you. And from District Five, Chance Condit?
Well, this is a multifaceted issue. There's no doubt. It's very complex, and it's not going to take a one-size-fits-all approach. I do think it's great that the state of California got Assemblyman Adam Gray, who I actually worked for previously. He helped secure seven million dollars for our county to be used on homeless, homelessness and addressing the homeless crisis. And I do think that's great. We'll take the state's money when we can get it. But we have a revenue stream currently that we can use to be proactive and self-efficient in addressing mental health crisis here in Stanislaus County. And that is cannabis. Our current county board of supervisors have started issuing out cannabis dispensary licenses in unincorporated areas. So what we should do as a board, and what I would advocate for, is earmarking that revenue specifically to go towards a mental health crisis by providing work and job training programs as well as housing. And Host House out in Patterson is a great example, and I think that's something we can build on regionally. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Tom Helenin from District Five?
Well, I, I think that's a great idea. And I'll, I'll, homelessness, and I'm going to come at this from both sides. And I believe Captain Condit had it right. You know, the drug abuse and alcohol abuse and mental health is critical. I used to collect coats for a guy, and then he would distribute them to other homeless people. Well, he died. So I, so I have sympathy for that, and I try to help with that. I just took a friend of mine to the Stanislaus Recovery Center the other day. He, he just couldn't maintain, but at least, you know, he came back, he came back in and he went to get help. Now, conversely, the effects of this on everybody else, it's unacceptable what hap, and Bill Zasloki hit on, you know, AB 109 and those things. We have a lot of just criminality out there in the homeless population, and it's not right. And it's not, we shouldn't say that it's not petty when it's your windshield that gets smashed and your stuff stolen out of your car, or you go to the park and these guys are going to bathroom by your kids and you, that's unacceptable.
Thank you.
But what we have to do is give Sheriff Jerksey and his deputies the resources to put them in the new jail.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Everybody's answered the homeless one. It's a nice creative ideas there, by the way. Okay, we'll start the next question again with District Five, and we'll start with Chance Condit, and here's your question.
Marie, I'm not sure what happened, but you've ended up being muted, my dear.
Never. Okay, try it again. What is your position regarding potential development in the Salida Highway 99 wood colony area?
Well, that is not the district I'm running in. I'd probably defer on that. But my position is agriculture is our, that is our economy here. And I would, I would be for preserving wood colony. I think we have a great resource in wood colony. And, but you also leave that up to, we have Laughco that would oversee that as well. But I would be open to hearing from the public if that was ever to come in front of the board, and that would go over to Laughco.
Thank you. And Tom Helenin?
Yeah, you know, not, not my district. I've read about that in the B, but haven't given it much study. I think areas, if they don't want to develop, they tend not to develop because if the land's not sold, there's no place to build the homes.
Okay. The District One people, we'll start with Bill Zasloki regarding development near Highway 99.
There it goes. I pushed my mute button, and it did not unmute. So what is interesting with that conversation, I have been very much involved in it. This was recently was a bit of a challenge. And, and so what I did was ask that our, our council adopt paying for and placing it within the next 24 months, doing a comprehensive general plan and opening up the dialogue between those that live in Wood Colony and the entire city of Modesto. That's never happened. We've not done that. And it's time to get a conversation, not only for everyone that's, that's engaged in it. That land is precious. I completely understand the sympathies of those that live out there. I ride a bike a lot for health reasons, and I've ridden through Wood Colony. It's beautiful land. But more importantly, it's fine for the citizens to tell us what they want. And I want to give them that access to do it, and that's what I did, what I did.
Thank you. And Buck Condit?
If people are in charge, we need to listen to them and what they want. Ultimately, we need to protect every inch of prime agricultural farmland. But, you know, that is going to be an issue that goes through the Laughco process, and, and we need to listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is on a different topic. Today's Modesto B revealed a potential budget crunch for the 2020-21 Stanislaus County budget, essentially due to the cost of COVID. If you were on the board now, what would you recommend? And we will start with Bill Zasloki.
That's, that's a good question. I would do similar to what we have done on the city, and that's take a look at every single department and measure every single department for what that, what are critical and non-critical issues, and then start building a new budget based on that information. And also, there are some reserves that could be utilized if we need to during this time. I'm not expecting we'll have a full-blown recession as we have had immediately. That, that could come a little bit later. But in any case, just planning for the future and making sure we're, we're tight with our, our nickels and dimes and everything else within the, the county for, when we are challenged with even more. So it could happen, and that's where we start.
And Buck Condit?
Regardless how we make up that money and, and how the balance gets, where the budget gets balanced, we're going to protect public safety. If we have to, we'll freeze any pay raises with the management to try to make up that, that, that dollar amount. But public safety and health services, especially during this time of COVID, needs to be protected. But right now, I think we're heading right down the path of, we need to get the economy back open again and back and running, or we're going to be looking at this again the next year.
And the candidates now from District Five, and we'll start with Tom Helenin.
Yes, you know, this is when the fantastic financial stewardship of the current and previous boards is really going to be helpful because this is one of those times when you have to go to the well and tap some of that money. I know what generally is done in many other local jurisdictions is you go to the department heads and you say, give me a budget with 10% less, with 20% less, so that needs to be done. And then after that, you then take that and, and as the other candidates have said, determine what's, what's essential. And obviously, public safety, even more than ever, is essential, and build from there. The county is also the mental, the health provider for the, the entire county. So that, in a COVID situation, we also need to prioritize that. And, because we don't know, we've got the flu coming up. They've got another potential round of COVID hitting. So I think those two areas need to be looked at and prioritized.
Okay. And Chance Condit?
No, I'm glad you asked this because actually last night on the city council, we had our budget vote. And similar to the recommendation I made last night, we are facing a deficit currently with our community center of approximately $1.7 million. I made the motion that the council cut their own department first before looking elsewhere. We have four or five council members who currently receive $100,000 annually in healthcare benefits, and we should be looking internally. Government should always look at what they can give so that it can make a difference for the public first. And say, you know, and we should also look and consider at administrative salaries. I do think we should cut at the top first if we are going to make those cuts. I'm not taking on our county CEO, but he makes a very handsome salary of over $300,000 a year. We have a median income in this county of roughly $60,000. So that's where you need to look. And we do need to preserve public safety because that is a priority, and that is essential.
Okay. Next question. Right? Proposition 25 on the November ballot would allow SB 10 to go forward, that is, replacing cash bail with a risk assessment system to determine if a suspect of some low-level crimes should be released before going on to trial. Do you favor this no cash bail measure? And we'll start with Tom Helenin.
Sorry. No, I don't. I think recent events have shown that now is not the time for that.
Okay. And Chance Condit?
I'll be voting no.
Okay. And Buck Condit?
I also will be voting no.
Nobody wants to elaborate? And who do I have left here? Oh. Bill, Bill Zasloki. I was looking for the next question.
So, yeah, I'll elaborate because this is, this is an example of what's happening so often in our state, where they are taking people out of the prison system and saving the dollars for themselves and sending people here with, with COVID-19 as well, not with the proper, the proper dollars in order to support them when they show up in our county. It's just another, it's another racket. And it's time to say not only no, but, you know, heck no. Put it that way.
Okay. According to my clock, in order to give ample time for your closing statements, this will probably be the last of the questions that's submitted, and it's about you. So if you can elaborate a little bit about your experiences or any personal characteristics that make you the better candidate for the Board of Supervisors. And we'll start with Buck Condit.
Yeah, I think my community service, working as a firefighter now for 33 years, serving the people of Stanislaus County, 28 of those years have been right in District One. I've worked out of, recovered every fire station in Supervisor District One. That has put me on streets, in the businesses, in the orchards, and on the rangeland. I know District One like the back of my hand. And I've been serving the people well there, making decisions about life and death and the preservation of property. That is the type of experience that we need, especially right now. And I think that's what separates my opponent and I. Thank you.
And Bill Zasloki?
In my opening statement, I, I brought up the fact of experience. I've brought business experience. Having experience is what I'll bring to the Board of Supervisors. It's business of being successful. It's business of having to keep a budget and sign the front of the check for all my adult life until I got on the council and I have to sign back the check now. And, but until that time, that's, that's what I did. I ran, as I said, hundreds of employees and subcontractors, including subcontractors. When I got involved in city government, I started working on transportation. Our infrastructure is a disaster. I helped pass Measure M, which was enough to give us that tax increment that we needed to get jobs started. And I was successful at that, including on 132. Recently got, brings more Overpass in line to start studying it, as well as Stanford, new Overpass at 99, getting that studied. That was because I put it on our 10-year, our five-year plan at StanCog, and we've released an RFP. It's going to start. It'll take about four or five years to get it going, but it's started now.
Okay. Chance Condit, tell us the experience, personal characteristics that make you the better candidate.
I believe my time on the Siri City Council has given me a perspective of, of the tax-sharing inequity between our cities and our county. You know, our county gets a majority of our tax funds. Our cities are fully reliant on sales tax revenue. We do need to have a renegotiation in that deal so that our cities are more self-reliant and have more tax dollars for services that they desperately need. So I do believe that the county needs to be a better partner in that aspect, and that's a perspective I'm going to bring to the dais. Also, as an economic development specialist and working for Opportunity Stanislaus, going out and aggressively recruiting businesses and trying to entice them to our county and offering incentives, and also trying to streamline projects and working with the private sector. So those are just some of the qualities. But other than that, I'm going to be, bring a fresh perspective. I'm going to have an independent voice, and I'm always going to put the needs of the community first and be accessible to our residents.
Okay. And Tom Helenin?
Well, my experience includes 24 years working in local government. As I said, I made it my life's work. I also served for 20 years on the Community College Board. And I'm going to read here so I don't, I also, I've been on the County Fair Board, the Boards of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Senior Opportunity Service Programs, the County Mental Health Advisory Board, the County Adult Day Healthcare Planning Council, and was the founding director of the Latino Community Roundtable.
Okay. So each of you had a chance to tell us a little bit more about yourselves. Okay, with that, it's time for the closing remarks, that each of you will have two minutes. And we'll start with, because of the way the draw was, we'll start with Tom Helenin being the first to give his closing statement, which is a two-minute one.
Okay. And I'll be brief. I always think that politicians and candidates talk too much. I'll be very brief and won't use that time. As a city and special district attorney, I helped the local governments guide them through recovery from the Great Recession. I think that experience can be especially valuable as the community rebuilds and recovers from the economic and other damage caused by the current health pandemic. And I've got a new reason to be concerned about that and really want to make that happen. I've just learned how to be a grandpa for the first time.
Congratulations.
You know, I, I want that child to, to want to be in Stanislaus County, a prosperous Stanislaus County. So together, let's make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chance Condit?
Well, I want to thank the league again for having us here tonight, asking the tough questions and all that you do. And it's an honor to be running for District Five. You know, District Five has some great communities. I hope that I I hope that I have the honor of serving them on the Board of Supervisors. I am proud to have some endorsements, including four former mayors of Series, five former mayors of Patterson, Newman Croslane School Board members, Janice Comforty, Burns Snodderly, and Rose Lee Hurst, as well as the Series Police Officers Association, the Stanislaus County Sheriff Supervisors Association, Series Modesto Patterson Fire Associations, as well as Consolidated. And I also have the endorsement of former State Senator Anthony Canelo. I'm really proud of those endorsements. I'm honored to have their support. But at the end of the day, this race isn't about endorsements. It's about what you're going to do as the next county supervisor. And I plan on bringing a fresh perspective. I plan on representing the needs of our communities and being a voice for those who don't have a voice. Now, I want to make a difference and I'm always going to put the needs of community first. If anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out, 209-622-7485. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've heard from the candidates for District Five, and now we'll hear from the candidates from District One, starting with Buck Condon.
Yeah, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for, again, for providing this opportunity. I'm not going to take your two minutes of time responsive, approachable, and accountable. I'm running for the, to represent the people of District One. I'm not running to represent the bureaucracy that has been created. Representing the people, I'm running for supervisors to build on the strengths and tackle the many challenges we have in Stanislaus County. That's why I'm running. I'm not looking for my next office up. I'm running for the people. And if people have questions, again, my phone number is 209-402-4238. If you have any questions at all, please give me a call. I appreciate the endorsements of Assemblyman Lee Florida and the Stanislaus County Sheriff Supervisors Association and most of the fire departments, Consolidated Fire, Modesto Firefighters, Patterson Firefighters, Salida. I appreciate all their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bill Zasloki?
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this, not only this election, but every single election. I have over 46 years, again, of business as a small business. What comes with that is, in the first year I took office at the city of Modesto, in one vote, I saved the city $2.1 million and about plus an additional $600,000 annually over an LED light change operation that was overcharging us when we were getting ready to adopt it. Took two weeks, but I got it stopped. And we saved the money and we got the lights both. I also was instrumental in, in getting the $83 million for Highway 132, amongst other grants that I went out and found the grant writers for. I've been proactive in water and homeless and public safety, and that will continue to be my priority when I go into serve as District Council, including rolling back the draconian things that are slowing us from being able to recover our economy with COVID-19. Businessman, that's what I bring to the county and what I brought to the city of Modesto. I've been known as being a calm voice in a storm amongst the council, and that's not going to change on the county either. I have been endorsed by the Sheriff of Stanislaus County, PORAC, which is a state police officers organization, MPOA, Modesto POA, and SSDA, the sheriffs that drive the cars and protect us. Thank you very much. This opportunity to tell you a little bit about me. And I look forward to hearing from you before, for those that have any questions, give me a call or email me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing a little bit about yourselves and what we can expect from you and sharing your ideas on the issues that have come to the fore. This concludes the forum for Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, Districts One and Five. I want to thank the candidates for running for public office and for participating in this forum with us this evening. And also thank you to our League of Women Voters volunteers. And as you are aware, it will be available to the public for viewing as of Saturday. So we'll make that word out as far as we can do it, and you can do that yourselves and spread the word with us. In the meantime, I would encourage everybody to take advantage of the opportunity and the privilege that we all have as citizens to exercise our right to vote, not only on November 4th, but for whatever action comes in the rest of your life. Vote. Thank you.